Good evening. In compliance with Chapter 551, Open Meetings of the Texas Government Code, I call to order a public hearing meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Thursday, June 26, 2025 at 5:01 PM. A quorum of the board is physically present at the Austin ISD Central Office to conduct this meeting. This meeting is being broadcast on cable channel 22 through Spectrum, a sound broadband, and on channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on those platforms. For individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing, welcome and thank you for joining us. Next is an opportunity for the public to share comments with the board. This time allows speakers to comment publicly pertaining the 2025-2026 Austin ISD budget. Members of the public wishing to participate in the public hearing portion of our meeting called a dedicated Austin ISD phone line in advance of the meeting to sign up to speak in person or to audio record their remarks. Tonight, we have no caller signed up to speak in person, and we have one who left a recorded message. We will now play that message for public testimony, so please listen carefully.
Good evening. My name is Raul Longoria, an Austin Up Close graduate, and I'm here to urge Austin ISD to reverse its decision to lay up. Is not just another employee. She's a connector, problem solver, and a fierce advocate of public education. Her absence will leave a noticeable void in how this district builds trust with its community. Under her leadership, she secured over $1 million for the parent support specialist and for the first time ever, live in-person interpretations at graduation, allowing families to fully participate in their children's success. Now, as we face campus closures and consolidation, we need more community engagement, not less, and we need her. Please do not let short-term budget choices destroy long-term trust and progress. Reinstating is not just the right move, it's a necessary one. Thank you.
Thank you to our caller. This concludes public testimony. Trustees, are there any questions or clarifications? Thank you. As a reminder to the public, please feel free to share any general comments or questions on non-voting items with the board by email at trustees@austinisd.org. And next is a presentation of the 2025-2026 Proposed General Fund Food Service and Debt Service Budgets. Mr. Segura, would you please introduce this item?
Good evening, President Boswell's members of the board. I'd like to invite up Ms. Katrina Montgomery, our interim chief financial officer, to take us through the presentation.
Hello, I'm President Boswell and Superintendent Segura and the board. Today, we're going to go over the FY 25-26 Proposed Budget. This is a budget that you've seen, but we're going to kind of go through it step by step. This slide tells us this budget prioritized what's matters most. So what matters most to Austin ISD? Our students, our educators, as well as our staff. So we're very proud to produce this budget. The general fund budget assumptions, this slide gives us how did we just create the budget? What is the foundation of the budget? So student data, our enrollment is at 72,303. This is at the time of snapshot. Since snapshot, our budget number, our enrollment numbers have increased. We're doing the snapshot number to make sure we're just being as conservative as possible when planning how we're going to move forward through the next fiscal year. Our average daily attendance is at 93%, and our average daily attendance is 64,100. Our tax collections, our change in property values, we're showing a decrease of 2% change in property values, and the change in tax collections is also 2% with a 99% tax collection rate. So one of the things we want to make sure that we're clear about on this slide is Travis Central Appraisal District gave us our numbers in April. We will get the final numbers in July, but we feel that these numbers are very conservative. These are the numbers that we should be using to create our budget. For FY 25-26 Proposed Budget summary, you've seen this, but let's go through it. We have our general fund, and so our general fund revenue is $1.58 billion less our recapture of $715.5, operating expenditures of $984.1. We have school improvement. Normally, this is in our operating expenditures line item, but we wanted to make sure that we pointed out how much we're spending in investing in school improvement, which is $8 million. Our vacancy savings is $15.3 million. Land sales of $45 million, which are two properties. PMS reform, which just means us making sure how we report our information to TEA that it is accurate and scrubbed as possible. We believe we can get an additional $1 million from that. And state funding, we have some slides that'll go over that later for $9 million. Master schedule efficiencies, other identified strategies, enforced reductions, we're going to talk about those in detail in a second. So what this shows is the proposed, the adoption net change in fund balance would show that we're taking from our fund balance $19.7 million, which will leave our fund balance at 15.21%. The one thing we want to talk about here at this 19.7 is we are still committed to trying to reduce this deficit. This 19.7 is what we're asking the board to approve today, but this is not a stopgap. This doesn't mean, oh, we got to 19.7, we're at 15.21% that we stop. We're going to continuously do work to reduce the deficit over the next fiscal year. So some of the identified strategies, the one I want to call out first is the central office restructure. And you see it says budgeted strategies of $10 million. But then also, we've seen that our superintendent sent us a letter showing that it was $9.6 million. But then we only have $6 million, so I want to talk about that. The $10 million is our total amount that we were going to reduce from central office, whether it was grant funds, bond funds, Title I, wherever the money came from. And the $6 million date that we have now, we can, we believe that it will grow, but that is general fund. So when we're looking at the right-hand side, we're looking at what the general fund, what has happened with the general fund. So we have supplementary programs, which we have some in mind, but that is more TBD. Special education, we want to reduce from contracts, $7 million. Our centralized special education placement, we have $2 million, but we have TBD. We want to figure out how can we do this so that we can not have a negative impact to our students, but that we can also have savings. So we're going to figure out how we can do this the best. State funding, which we talked about, these are just projections of $9 million net. Property insurance, we're saving $3 million. 10% campus non-staff, so $800,000. So that's one of the strategies. Do we reduce the campus budgets by 10%? That's still TBD. 5% department budget, so we're going to ask all of our chief officers to reduce their budget by 5%, totaling an additional $3 million. And this is non-staffing dollars because we know we just impacted staffing. PPFT reconciliation is $1 million. Now, I want to be clear with this $1 million. This is not saying that we're cutting the PPFT program. It is already in our, in our salaries budget, so this is just a separate line item that had it there. This is not a, this is just removing it from the budget. It is not removing PPFT for our teachers. Benefits contribution hold, we did that this year. We did two, we did two months, the total $9 million. So this year, we're, we're going to do one hold for $4 million. And then there are still other administration strategies, possibly reducing stipends, that we have to look at. The one thing I want us to leave here with is that this $44 million is what we knew that we had to get to, to get to the 15.21%. So if any one of these strategies go higher, so if we get additional state funding, we can do one of two things. We can reduce another line item, or we can just throw that back into our fund balance. But what we are committed to doing is making sure, whether these strategies all hold 100% or not, that we will reduce $44 million in FY 25-26. So central office restructure, we've talked about that. We know that the staff went through this over the last few weeks, totaling $9.6 million. Again, remember the $9.6 million is in total, and we have little check marks to show how we've kind of gone through the timeline. The next debt, the next timeline date is August 1st, which is employment changes take effect. Changes in general fund, this is a slide that you've, we've talked through before. It shows our FY 24-25 adopted budget versus our proposed budget. And the biggest line item we have here is 91, which we're going to talk about on this slide. The contracted instructional services, which we know as recapture. You can see that it's saying that our recapture reduced $105 million. But our recapture reduced, but also our revenue reduced because of the change in property value. So this $105 million is not additional money that we can use to spend on our budget. We wanted to call that out. You also see 31 in the middle of the page, an additional $16 million. That was for special ed educational contracts. So our stable state multi-year balance budget, we didn't get where we wanted to this year having a balanced budget, but that is still something that we are very, we're going to work hard at. It's making sure that we have a balanced budget year over year over year. That's very important and protecting the quality of our education for our students. District administration is committed to a budget that achieves at minimum a 15% fund balance for FY 25-26. The budget that we're producing, showing you today, is 15.21%. A fund ben, fund bu, fund balance policy. This, it's a lot of words here that we have here. In the event extenuating circumstances resulting in a budget deficit, the district may maintain a fund balance as low as 15% up to three years. And so there's going to be a policy vote later this afternoon that you guys will vote on redo, changing it from 20% to 15.21. If I remember correctly, that's 12.7 on the agenda items. But the chart helps us explain it much easier. Here, one, it says we'd be at 15%. We're already over that. We're at 15.21. Superintendent Segura and I have talked about making sure we don't want, we're never just going to make, we're never just going to slide through. So if it's 15%, we always want to make sure that we're doing more. And then in FY 27-28, we'll be back. So as of June of 2028, we'll be back to our 20% fund balance. This is a slide that Chief Jacob Reed presented last week or two weeks ago at our previous session. So this slide hasn't changed. The only thing we've updated is of the $35.9 million that we believe Austin ISD will receive, $9 million net of that will stay with Austin ISD. The rest of it has specific restrictions and guidance given by the legislature. So this slide is Austin ISD certified property values. And the reason we wanted to show this slide is simple because we wanted to talk about SB 4 and SB 23. We know if those are approved in November, that there will be an increase in the homestead exemption. So in 23-24, the homestead exemption went from $40,000 to $100,000. And then for 25-26, if it goes through and pass in November, it'll go from $100,000 to $140,000. So when we get our updated numbers from Travis Central Appraisal District in July, there should be two sets of numbers. It should be one at our current property values, but then one as if this passed in November. So we'll have additional information of which to kind of do our amended budget in September. So the average value home in Austin ISD, you've seen this document. We've done it when we did the 2022 bond. You've seen it at Vader. We just wanted to show our community how this would impact them, as well as how this will impact Austin ISD. So the first little house is with the $100,000 homestead exemption. For FY 24-25, where the average home taxable value is $558,000. And then you have $100,000 homestead exemption, the Austin ISD tax rate, and the estimated taxes to Austin ISD is $4,357. So that's saying this is what the average homeowner at a value of $558,000. The one thing I want to point out is that we know that we have a lot of families who don't have a $558,000 home value, so then their value would be different. It would be less. So this is the average home value homeowner at the $558,000. And then to the far right, this is with the $140,000 tax, um, homestead exemption. It would go from $4,357 to $4,040. So that would impact Austin ISD for this particular home, homeowner, $317. So we would receive $317 less, they would, they would pay less as well. So we wanted to talk about compensation. We know that year over year over year, Austin ISD has been committed and dedicated to giving additional pay to our staff. The column that we really want to spend some time with on is FY 25-26. Our preliminary estimates from HB2 is that we'll receive $17.4 million. And the way this will be distributed is $2,500 for each classroom teacher with at least three to five years' experience. And we're saying that that is approximately 600 of our teachers. So approximately 600 of our teachers will receive an additional $2,500. The $5,000 for each classroom teacher would be for five or more years, and that's approximately 3,000 of our teachers. The other thing we have this year is TIA. $5.3 million will be received for Austin ISD, for TIA, the teacher incentive allotment. And we're saying that that will go to approximately 600 of our teachers. So you can see that our teachers have opportunities and will be receiving rate increases over this next 25-26 fiscal year.
Yeah, Katrina, if you don't mind, I, I think it's important, you know, this is a slide that we haven't seen before organized in this way. And when we started the conversation, we talked about how, you know, the budget is, is a document, right? That, that binds our values with like our board governance, all of it. And so I think it's important for all of us, me especially, to communicate out the continued commitment to pay staff, increase salaries as best we can. But we also have to acknowledge that every time we do that, there's a competing, you know, challenge that we have to get those costs elsewhere because the pressure that we're getting from the state is just, it's immense, right? And so going back from '22, '23, showing the investment, $21 million, '23, '24, $64 million. And then the tax rate election, that was less than a year ago, that we worked so hard to, to communicate out and educate our community on, had a meaningful impact. And then here we are again. So there's lots of charts, there's lots of comparisons that occur in a region, but I think it's important to talk about, you know, we are investing in our staff, and we do things that are aligned with our values. And it's important to just kind of remember why we do it and how, and what we've done just in the last couple of years. So just wanted to make that point, continue on.
Thank you very much. And then this is our slide, teacher pay raises. So at the bottom, it just kind of gives us a little bit more information. In July, we will do the consultation with Ed Austin to finalize the compensation plan. August 21st, the board vote on approval of the compensation agreement. September 15th, compensation letters go out to employees receiving increases. And then September 30th, new rates and retro payments will be received on their normal paycheck. And finally, our next step, so we're here today for the hearing. Later tonight, you will vote on the budget. So today is July 26, July 25, June 26. July 25th, we have our TCAD final certified values. So that's when we'll start making some changes with our, with our budget. September of 2025, we're committed to, at the very least, at that point, bringing an amended budget to review the items listed below. The TCAD final property values, the HB2 final estimates, compensation will be finalized, as well as any forced reductions. And then December, March, and May, at the very least, we will bring in amended budget as needed. And that is it for the presentation. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you so much, Ms. Montgomery. Trustees, do we have questions? Trustee Hunter.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. I don't actually have a question, but I do, I would like you to review something again. The slide with the 39, I think it's .5 million, if we can go back to that slide.
Which slide?
It's with AISD, like the, from HB2, I think it's right after that. Yes, this one. You mentioned it, and I just don't want it to escape people. Everyone will see this number, but can you reiterate like the money that is actually not attached to something else already?
Yes. So this slide shows what we believe from all Casey's information, what Austin ISD will receive. These are still estimates, but it's $35.9 million. The net of that, there are restrictions and requirements placed on this, on money from the legislature. So the net that we're projecting that Austin ISD will receive that's not tied to something else will be $9 million.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Additional, trustee Quintana.
First, I wanted to clarify these minutes count against our...
This is a legally required hearing, so these are neutral minutes under our law star governance. So, and this is obviously an important topic of importance to our community. So I appreciate that we can discuss this as needed.
Okay, thank you. I have two questions. Hi, thank you. My first one is about slide nine. If we can go to slide nine, the fourth line, the centralized special education placement. I guess I'm just wondering what that's going to look like and how many students will be affected.
Yeah, so trustee Quintana, I can speak to that. One of the things that we have heard from, from many of our advocates, and one of the things that we know is we don't have a program if the staff isn't there. And so we do have different units throughout AISD. And over the course of many, many years, there have been hubs that have been kind of created. And so there are schools that have student populations that receive special education services that are north of 30%. And so we are an inclusive school district, but we know that there are times when you may have this, the unit, but the staff isn't there. And one of the things that we know is that the staff isn't there, is the program really hold? Are you really providing that service? And so right now, we have vacancies, there are costs associated with covering, and then you have kind of a ratio that is not necessarily what it could be if it was just managed differently. So what we're saying is this is not a total overhaul by any means, just to be clear. This is, in those instances where essential placement can be made to provide the service and have the person certified in that space, then we'd, we'd like to take that opportunity. It's an estimate. It may not ultimately get there, but that's the approach that we're taking.
Okay. Thank you. And then if we could go back to slide, was one of the first ones. Yeah, I guess slide three, where you're talking about our fund balance being at 15.21. You mentioned, oh, I'm sorry, there were, that's the wrong slide. There's another slide that says, on slide eight, that has how it will go from the 15% to 20% in a year. And I'm just wondering how that is going from year 2026, '27 to '27, '28. You have a 5% jump there. And I'm wondering if you have any ideas as to how we're going to make that happen?
So I think one of the things that needs to be made clear is by the June, June of 2028, so effectively, you get the entire fiscal year of '27, '28 to make that final adjustment. And so, you know, as far as strategies go, there's lots of them in front of us, not only to be implemented in '25, '26, '26, '27 as well, so that we can begin, well, in '27, '28. So there are lots of strategies. I mean, we're going to be talking about consolidations later tonight. You know, we're going to have to continue to push. It's not a one-year turnaround. A one-year turnaround would require us getting to a balanced budget and then actually having additional proceeds to, to fund, to increase the fund balance. So it is not a one-year kind of recovery time period.
So then what, I don't understand, then what does this mean?
Can you put the slide? Oh, did you just speak to it? Yeah, so, so what it's saying here is 24-25, the fiscal year that we're currently in, that we're about to finish, we've been, we, we started the year with a board passage of above 20%. Over the course of the year, it went below 15%. And, and we have been making significant cuts to get it back above 15% by the end of this coming year. And so over the course of a year, we have a fund balance, and cash gets drawn down, and we get funds from the Travis County Appraisal District. So when we talk about a fund balance, we're, it's a, it's a tie to the end of the year or the beginning of the year, because throughout the year, there's always a draw up or down. And so what we're saying is for 24-25, we are going to end this, in the year, with a deficit, which is going to draw our fund balance down, which means that we're going to start the next fiscal year with a fund balance, and we're, have strategies in place to maintain that fund balance or get it back to 15.2%. So the goal right now is to end '25, '26 at 15.2, and then for '26, '27, continue to work, getting to a stable budget, and then, you know, fund, the fund, fund balance with any additional costs, or sorry, additional revenue that we can find. Because we have to continue to cut to get back to a balanced budget. So that's '26, '27, and then the goal is for '27, '28. So we would get to work through '27, '28, and at the end of '27, '28, which is June of 2028, hit 20%. So you get really three years to do the work to get back to that point.
I guess I'm just not a mathematician or a school finance expert. And so when I'm looking at these numbers, they seem really nebulous to me because we say we're going to have 20, except in the case that we don't, then we can have the 15 if we vote on it, and the goal is 20, and, but we don't really have like a, a map of how we're going to get there, but there's strategy. I guess I'm just trying to find, you know, concrete, if any of this is concrete. Or if I'm just, if I'm just being cynical, and you can tell me that. But like, I'm, when I think about my time working in government at City Hall and at our state legislature, and they write something into law, I'm not sure that people are planning that, those legislators or city council people are planning for the next iteration of that body to come in and change it. Because then to me, it's like, then what's the point of having a 20% fund balance if we're just going to change it? And I understand, it is extenuating circumstances. I understand the position that this board is in. But, you know, if it's, if we, like, why, like, why 15? Like, why not 10? Like, why don't we vote for it to go to 10?
So one of the things that we want to make sure that we have on hand is cash, because we rely on cash to, to ensure that we can make payroll, so that we can pay all of our expenses. And so one of the slides we produced earlier in the year had kind of the cash flow profile over the course of the year. And, you know, starting now, we're going to be, you know, July, August, September, we will be paying out money, a lot more money than comes in. And so we rely on our fund balance to help us kind of never have to actually extend a line, get a line of credit extended for us. And so it's really, really important. And then also, whenever there's a significant event, like when we had winter storm Uri or we had the pandemic, we were pushing out dollars, paying staff, you know, that were not working. We were paying for PPE, we were doing response work before we're getting reimbursement from, getting reimbursed from insurance companies or from FEMA. And so, you know, 15% is as low as I will ever go. Katrina and I, it's about two months of operating expenditures at cash on hand. We want to be at three months, or 90 days of operating expenses. So that's why 15%, and why not 10 or 14 or anything other than that. Our preference is 20%. We want to get up to 20%. But again, there were, we already cut a lot in '25, '26. You know, we're showing it's 44 million. That's on top of the tens of millions that have already been cut. And so we, if we, if you get to 20%, the disruption to the system is pretty significant in the time that we have. So we have to stabilize and then build back out, which is why the three-year time horizon is appropriate. Any bigger of an adjustment too quick is, is pretty significant and very disruptive. And even the ones that we've taken are already very disruptive. So that's what we're trying to manage through this process.
What happens if we don't, if, if we vote against it? What does that look like then?
The budget?
Not the budget. We have to approve, isn't this an its own?
The policy.
Yeah.
I mean, I, we would be, we'd be in conflict with the, the policy. I mean, that's, that would be, and then, you know, there, that's, that's what would happen. And so people, you know, there'd be an option for someone to, grievances?
So if we vote no, then we're violating policy. But I thought a vote was, so our vote is dictated by policy? Our, our yes vote is dictated by policy?
Do you want to come here, Jacob?
Yeah.
Yeah. So you have a policy that establishes that, you've got a minimum threshold. You can do things that violate policy, right? That is not a, that happens. It's not a best practice, it's not what we would advise. So if you have a policy that says we're going to have a minimum 20% fund balance, and we're faced with circumstances that require us to adopt or consider adopting a budget that can't meet that, you know, you can do that in violation of policy, but you know you're going to have to adopt a budget, like not adopting a budget by the end of the fiscal. Right? So... So there would not be, in, in my opinion, there would not be a good reason not to approve that policy. If you are going to adopt the budget, you've gotten pretty far down the road with this, this question of, of the, the fund balance. So at, at this hour, I think it makes sense to adopt the policy for, for that consistency.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Singh, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay. Additional questions? Trustee De Udoisti?
Just regarding the centralized placements for special education, do we have a projection on when we would identify those and when the families would be notified of change of places? Is that something that's gonna be going on, ongoing during the year or are we trying to do that before the start of the year?
Well, so, yeah, so, so one of the things that we're, this is why the last couple of million dollars matter here. So you see this, the amendment in September that's coming back. Well, you know, there's nine million dollars, so you see centralized special education placement, projected strategy, budget strategy to be determined. Because the, the, we've identified it, the implementation of it's gonna require some planning, application of families. And here's the thing, if the nine million dollars from the state ends up being ten and a half million dollars, then that changes. Every one of these numbers slightly change. And so what we're trying to do with this table here is show you that there's nuance in these final numbers and we're really, really trying to stay from, away from the things that will have the impact closest to the classroom. And so we will spend the summer building it out, making sure we identify, you know, if we have to go down that path, what it looks like. But we have identified it as a potential kind of opportunity. So it'll be, you know, through the month of July and then notifications in early August, if that's how we end up implementing.
Okay, so I appreciate hearing that, that that's one of the items that hopefully we don't have to cut as much. But definitely, I know, I'm expecting that we are gonna get continuing questions from families about that. So kind of solidifying that, that timeline. But just to clarify, what I'm hearing is that there's potential that, for that budget update later, after, after the start of the year, we would have identified that we wouldn't need to cut as much.
Correct. That, that, that's why, that's exactly right. The ones that are TBD, those are the ones that, you know, because there was, one of the things we're trying to do as an administration for our board is to be really clear and not just say, hey, this is nine million dollars, but how much of it is actually realized as we talk about putting it above the line, so we can actually embed it in the budget. And there are things that have been put into the budget that we have identified, we have already cut, and so they're, they're in there. They're baked, they're part of the billion dollars that are not in, on the slide. These are the ones that help us get to the, the fifteen point two percent. We're committed to the forty-four million, but now as you see, these numbers have gotten really, really small. So it's a half million dollar swing, one way or the other. And so some of these numbers, the larger ones especially, if they move a million dollars, then some of these smaller ones, the point fives, the ones, the twos, will fall off. So the goal now is to detail them out. We'll get information from Travis County Appraisal District, we'll get additional information from the lead, from HB two as things settle out. That'll help us come back in September and, and you'll see what it looks like. But we'll provide updates along the way before that as well.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Trustee Foster.
Just as we, I guess, proceed to several really important decisions tonight, I would just wanna express some gratitude to the administration, to the finance team for the work you all have, a whole bunch of people have been doing. And I, I think it's worth not losing sight of the fact that this is, when it comes to the fiscal work of the district, this is and has been for a couple of years now, an operationally strong organization. We have strong principles, we have, you come with strategies. You've been very transparent about the discussion of the, like, we can do this, or we can do this, we can do this. We come back to the board for clarification in terms of what most aligns with our vision. And I've really appreciated those conversations. And you've consistently demonstrated a capacity to execute. So we're gonna look at this and when you come back, you say, we've been able to do this and here's how and here's why. So I appreciate all of that. And we're being put to the test right now, I, I think like, probably like never before. As a result, on the principal side, the board has to, we have to look at our policies. I'm, I'm a twenty percent person myself, and this has been very, very difficult for me to think about making that push down to fifteen percent. And I think I was a, a no several months ago when this conversation was first introduced. And through conversations, through transparency, I've been able to see why I can follow the recommendation that we accept this three-year term of, say, of fifteen percent with an eye to, there, there's a deadline for that and we're getting back to twenty. That's really important. We've sold real estate and I'm not a sell-real estate guy. I don't, I don't really like that we've had to do this, because those are things that you, you just, you're, you're locked. There's only so many acres here and when we give them away, we ain't getting them back. And this is where we've been positioned by external circumstances. So again, our principles have been challenged and we've been, we've had to say, okay, where are my lines and why? And am I willing to lose the baby for the bathwater kind of thing? And then most painful of all, and I think as painful as those other things are, there's nothing like losing staff and having to go through the pain of restructuring. That means that people that are doing things that they love and that they do super well are not gonna be in a position to be doing those with us and for us right now if we approve a budget as it is. So this is hugely consequential and it's incredibly difficult. And I'm grateful for this and I don't take any of tonight's conversations around our budget lightly, not that I ever would, but especially now when we're talking about the reality of our family having to change in, in certain ways. So I guess I just wanna express some gratitude, acknowledge the weight of these decisions and sort of express my confidence in the administration with what you've put forward tonight.
Thank you. Additional questions? Trustee Singh? Okay.
Thank you. So Katrina, you, sorry. Ms. Montgomery, you're, you're really good at breaking down the, like, the budget in, in like, personal talk. Like, these numbers get really, really big. And so I'm gonna, I wanna give an analogy and I want you to tell me if this is like a legitimate analogy or like not quite there. So when I think of our, our, our fund balance policy, like, I think of like a family that has a policy that says we save twenty percent of our salary, like, that's what we do. First, we put it into savings, because we want to, you know, have a cushion to pay our mortgage or our rent if, if something happens. So some people, you know, some families have the, the privilege to do that and some people, you know, aren't, aren't there yet. And so I, I look at that, like, you know, maybe my family has, has a policy to, to save twenty percent, to put in the IRA or, you know, wherever we put it. And then, oh, I find out my, my, my class didn't make. And so, oh, my, you know, where our money is less than we budgeted, we have everything budgeted out just right. And my kid really, really needs therapy to make the progress that they're making and it's something that we pay for out of pocket. So I can choose to like stick to my role and, well, you know, we're gonna cut that therapy. Or I can say, all right, that's really, really important, we're going to put less in our savings account now. And then we're gonna plan, we're kind of stuck, we're stuck in our phone contract, we could get a cheaper one that doesn't have as much data, but we're stuck in that another year and we can make some plans, but we're just doing this right now. Is that?
That is a thousand percent it.
Okay.
That is as clear as you can get for us non-accountants who are dealing with this with their families. So yes, we all go into adulthood saying, I was told that I was supposed to have ten percent backed up or I'm supposed to tithe or I'm supposed to do all of these things, right? But also there are times where we have to decide to, trustees foster, this is what's important to me, but this is also my value. And so we are at that time, we are at that juncture now where we could say yes, and I think our superintendent explained it, we could say yes, we're gonna stick with twenty percent, but then the cuts that have already been really hard, they would have been a lot harder. There would have been more reductions to staff, there would have been more reductions to non-staffing. Might, maybe possibly the next thing is to our campuses, which we're saying, we, this is not our value. So yes, I understand what we're saying, how hard it is to reduce to fifteen percent. And your analogy was one thousand percent correct.
Okay, thank you. Because I think of it, like, times the seventy-three thousand kids who, like, next year is their only year they get to be in kindergarten. They get one shot to do that and one chance to have a senior year. And, you know, what would, would I want done for, for my kid, you know, by the community? Because I, because I actually think it's easier for people, like, in, in your position and the superintendent's position, say, to say, we're gonna, we're gonna cut, cut, cut. I think it's actually probably like more common to do something like that. So I'm, I'm really, I'm really like glad that we were able, like, we made really, really hard cuts, but it, it really, really shows our values and we're, you know, what all, all families want is to be able to send their kid to school next year with the confidence that they're gonna get taken care of.
Yes.
And not disrupted, so thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Singh, are you ready yet?
I am, thank you. Thank you for that explanation. I know. I know, you really are doing a great job, thank you, Ms. Montgomery. Okay, so a few questions on slide, I believe it's slide nine, I wanna say. Oh, wait, no, not slide nine, keep going. It's the one that has like the TBD cuts. Yeah, this one, okay. This is really helpful and I wanna just show gratitude to our superintendent and to the CFO for making it really clear about what cuts are certain. You've already made the decision, you've already identified the cuts at the line item level and those are the ones that are in that last column, identified to date strategies, correct? Okay, and then the TBD items are things that you are going to, you are committed to cutting throughout the course of the school year. They just haven't been identified to that granular level yet, correct? Like the specific?
Correct. The only thing, caveat to that is movement on the bigger items will create movement on the smaller items. And so if a larger opportunity, we can find more savings, then that will make when the smaller ones not be as required.
Got it.
So, 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 you know, there's still that flexibility and I, I do wanna point out the nine million, it's a projection, there's, it, it is nine million, but it could be nine and a half. And then all of a sudden, the things that are two hundred thousand dollars are now on the table. So that, that's what this table is attempting to communicate as well.
Okay, I appreciate that. And so.
Can I add something, Superintendent Segura? But with saying, trustee Singh, that we would at least cut the forty-four million so that we can always stay at the fifteen point two one percent fund balance.
I appreciate that, thank you. And when the T, if, as things do change on, I think this is a really important table. As things do change on this, I know every month we approve like budget amendments and things like that, but it would be helpful to keep this table as sort of a reference, to be like, hey, this thing that we're cutting actually impacted this thing over here. You know, as, like, as we do the TBDs, that's mostly what I'm interested in. Not like every, like, I don't wanna know about the hundred dollar, ten thousand, you know, like, but like the big things, you're like, hey, the ten percent campus non-staff, that's the thing, remember we had TBD at that budget meeting? Okay, this is, now we're making the cut. So that just kind of links us back so that we don't have any surprises at the end of the year. And it allows us to kind of keep track that we're being faithful to this as well. So that would be my request. And then I wanted to ask a very superintendent-y question, which is, you know, kind of big picture. As a superintendent, what do you see are, what risks are increased as a result of this buzz, budget? And which, which risks do you feel like are decreased as a result of this budget?
So, I think about risk a lot. I think about, and I define risk as the magnitude of something occurring multiplied by the probability of its occurrence, right? And when I think about the risks of, of a shift away from like twenty percent to fifteen percent, there is financial risk that, that we're incurring. Now, it's not so great that I'm uncomfortable, but it is something that when an organization's going through financial distress, which we are, you make adjustments and you create plans and you recover. So I think that there, you know, there is risk there. I think for me, what I really appreciate about the policy as part of the budget is we don't get to say no to everything. And as an organization, I, I've been here now seven and a half years, I think. There have been many times when we bring things forward to our community or to our staff or to the board and it's, it's a, we don't wanna cut that and we, this is not the place we wanna go. And so for us to get to where we need to be, we need to take incremental steps, but they need to be big enough to mitigate the risk along the way. I think from a climate and culture perspective, you know, being able to, to stay away from this, the, the schools was huge. You know, we've seen an increase in really all of our rates, the system is responding well. There's been a lot of work that's been done the last two years. And I think this budget kind of protects that work that's been done. It doesn't introduce another disruption so great that kind of moves us in the wrong direction. When you think about the things we report on with this MTSS or early literacy, I mean, those things, systems are moving. I think this best protects that at this moment. I think also, you know, one last part of this is the critical work that is tied to the existential risk that we talk about. Accountability, you know, one of the shifts that we had to make late was the investments in the restarts as well as the structural changes we made within the system, that was a ten million dollar add. Well, I had to find the dollars without adding ten more million dollars to the budget. And so some of the changes that occurred late in the year that we took on, you know, most notably central office, kind of was a, in response to things that we wanted to do over eighteen months, now we had to do within six months or three months. And, and so for me, you think about special education, you know, there are still significant investments in here. In this, this year, we added, you know, evaluators, we are weaning ourselves off our contracts, those are reflected in this budget. So, you know, those are the, the big, big risks that when we, when I as a superintendent think about, you know, protecting the values that we have and the quality of education, like protecting those and us from those bigger risks or what are most critical, and this budget does that. It doesn't absolve us from making hard decisions in the future, we're still gonna have to do that to get to where we need to be. But I think at this moment, it's, it's a, it's one that kind of balances all of that as best we can.
Thank you.
I don't know if that was a good response, but that's how I think about it.
That was, that was, that was, that's really reassuring, actually, so thank you for outlining all of that. Okay, so I went big picture now, I'm gonna go down to the details, which is, one basic question is, what is the dollar amount that we would actually need to get up to a twenty percent fund balance? Like roughly, I know it's not an exact, and, and you can come back to me with that later when we talk later, but that is a question that I have, that helps kind of put into perspective like what all needs to still happen. I did really appreciate getting that two hundred page behemoth of a document. I know there were some late nights there for you and others, so thank you. But I, I do encourage folks to take a look at that because with budgets, as we all know, the devil's in the details and there is a whole lot of detail in here. So I did wanna just note a couple of things. One is in here, you have a list of campus by campus of what the per pending, per pupil spending is. And I really, that was super helpful for me to see and it did also reassure me that we are using an equity lens with our campus level budgeting. You will see that there are more resources going to schools where our students need the most help, like, so thank you for that. And it's there in black and white and that transparency is super important and I encourage folks to take a look at that. I would be curious to know, I don't think it's in this document, but, you know, at a later time, I would be curious to know if we could have a list of campuses that increase their per pupil spending if we could have a list of campuses that increased their per pupil spending um, and those that decreased compared to last year. Maybe they've all decreased. I like, I I just don't really have a good sense. But that would just be another um, good data point for us to have. Um, you know, maybe in August, you can bring that to us. I don't need that right now. But um, the other question I had was page of this big two hundred page document. Yeah, sorry. A really helpful, I think page fifteen and sixteen are really good. They, there's two, there's two sets of pages that are really good, page fifteen and sixteen. And then I think it was at page twenty-five and twenty-six or twenty-six and twenty-seven. But this essentially is where you see the difference from this proposed budget for next year with the budget that we um, you know, adopted last, you know, for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Um, and so I'm looking at page fifteen. So this has, um, I believe this is, these are increases, correct?
Yes, correct.
From twenty-four, twenty-five, okay. So when I see, um, so I just want to call out a couple of things. One is, you know, we have um, the special education evaluators and diagnosticians. We have an, we see an increase there of eight million dollars. And you know, I had a conversation about this today, but I wanted to give you a chance to kind of explain what you explained to me about how, like, I was like, oh, I was kind of surprised to see that because I thought we were going to cut out contractors, but you had a really good explanation.
Yes, thank you, trustee Singh. So um, on this, on this page, page fifteen, you see the additional special education staff. Um, and the reason we're doing this is because what we've talked about is bringing our staff internal and stopping our or reducing our reliance on contractors. So you see the increase here because we had to include, increase, we had to include this in our budget. So you, we had to include it in our budget, but you also don't always clearly see the reduction because the reduction is on this slide that's up here, slide five. So it looks as if it, it appears that we did increase our budget, but we did because we gave the the additional staff so that they can start recruiting and hiring, which I believe Dr. Lee and her team are doing a really good job. But then there's also the offset that we're going to see the reduction in the contractors. So as we we see the reductions or the expense in contractors decrease, we're going to decrease that from the budget.
Great, thank you. Um, I also, what was, there was something else. Um, I was, well, I'll just go on to the more interesting one, which is the next slide, which is the cuts um, and and offsets. So are we voting, like, this is a little bit more granule, granular. But when we vote tonight on the budget, are we voting on like the detail that is in this two hundred page document as well? Are we just voting on the overall summary? Because there's some stuff in here that really hasn't, like, we haven't really deliberated so much on. Um, and so I'm just kind of wondering for slide sixteen.
Yes, trustee Singh, so the items, we are not voting on the book. The book is a supplemental document, and normally, we wouldn't even have this document this early. We tried, the team created it because we wanted to get you as much information to understand the budget. But no, this is a supplemental document. You're voting on the budget in knowing that we're saying, the district is saying, we're committed to getting us to fifteen point two-one percent. We're committed to making sure that we have an additional forty-four million dollars in reduction. So that's what you're voting on, not the supplementary documents.
Okay, I appreciate that. So um, this does have some things in here that, as you, you know, I spoke to you about that caused me a little like, oh, I didn't know that was happening. Um, you know, I saw a cut for literacy first and, you know, some other things that I wasn't really expecting to see. So how how do we, what is the board's role in some of the, like, some of this more granular level stuff?
Yeah, that that is really the, y'all approved the overall budget. The um, uh, kind of the deployment of those funds for programs, resources, you know, within those budgets is, you know, administrative work. An example of that might be, you know, twenty thousand dollars in supplemental contracts for name it. Well, you know, the contract would come, well, that contract maybe wouldn't come to you, but you know, you're not identifying that partner. That's not the the board's role. You're not sitting here and picking because there's thousands and thousands and thousands of lines, thousands and thousands of purchase orders. I mean, it's it's gargantuan. Um, and so, uh, yeah, that's that's not necessarily the the board's role in those subcategories. But the overall budget is obviously y'all's role in in approving. And for us, you know, we want to be hyper clear about how the funds are being deployed, how we're using them. Um, and so when there are big line items, we try to bring them out. When there are areas of interest, we'll bring them forward. Uh, and so so that's how we've approached it, and that's why there's so much data. It it's a lot.
Okay, so this is really more for like transparency and illustration purposes?
Uh, yeah, well, it it's, yeah, it's a supplemental document so that everybody understands how how our budget is deployed.
Okay, okay, because I I do, I do want, and I think if we, because you and I have talked too, and um, I think when in September, once we get a better sense of what we're getting from the ledge, my understanding is you're going to come back to us with even more detail. And that will be the time where we can really deliberate on maybe some of these or or just have a discussion, like, I'm just, I'm just wondering what I need to, if I need to advocate in a certain way, how do I do that?
Uh, yeah, so September is when you'll see um, kind of that come forward as part of the amendment. Uh, you know, the the programs that I think people have asked about, those are in the budget.
Okay.
Um, you know, we're going to move forward over the next, you know, six to eight weeks. And as things settle out, kind of see if that's an area we have to explore or not. Um, you know, I think in supplemental programs, it's half a million dollars. Um, you know, we certainly recognize that those programs support our students. There is a a need for them. Um, but again, as things get tighter and tighter and tighter, we have to explore more and more things. So so it'll be September.
Okay, I appreciate that. Um, the other question I had was related to pages tw- um, really page twenty, sorry. Computer slowing down. I think it's page twenty-six. Though it's not. Sorry, I'm not able to bring that page up on my laptop right now. Shoot. Okay, well, I just, I did notice that there was um, some cuts um, really well identified here. So thank you again for that transparency. That's really super helpful. Um, it kind of just goes into more detail, I think, than what you had in your slide presentation. But I did have a few questions, um, and no particular order. Um, I I do, well, I do see the property insurance, the two million dollars in reduction there, so yay. Um, I did notice a one million dollar reduction in the board of trustees line item, so what is that for? Y'all not going to feed us anymore, like, what's?
Speak to that, Jacob. Everybody cuts when we cut here in here.
I know.
Putting our trustees, which is, you know, it's important.
We get PBJs, like, what's happening?
Uh, well, first, I believe the big part of that is actually election cost.
Okay.
And so obviously, we only have an election every other year, but it maintains in the budget. And so that was cut to make sure that it was clear. Uh, we also reduced the budget to support internal audit um, and uh, in other contracted services for the board.
Okay.
And so that's what makes up the remainder.
So our personal limo that we get to go visit schools in is is not being touched.
The limo didn't make it in.
Okay, the private plane, that's all still, I'm just kidding.
You'll stop.
Okay, and I, can I, just for a second, it's our legal services we're being more efficient with. And then last year, we significantly reduced our budget for travel and training. And that remains a reduction, and that's really changed the way that we can go to board training and professional development. And we're still getting our hours done, but yeah, that remains as well. And that was the same time a lot of travel for staff was cut, and we're maintaining that.
Absolutely. Um, and then I noticed the four million dollars in cuts for transportation, so thank you. I know that was a really heavy lift. Um, I'm just sort of calling out like the biggies.
In many of these trustee, trustee Singh, um, you know, and the reason I it, I wanted to make the comment is because our ad hoc committee, who we worked with throughout the year, um, you know, they really worked with the finance department, they worked with staff to progress and and kind of build some of these ideas out, several of which have made it into the budget. And you brought up transportation as like one that we had to work through and spend time thinking about. Uh, that's one specifically that we worked with the ad hoc committee on.
I appreciate that. Um, I did have a question about the talent strategy system, like that one point two million dollar cut. Um, what is, what does that mean? What's being cut?
I believe trustee Singh, um, this is to do to staffing.
Okay.
I believe that the most majority, I also believe that um, Chief Hossack did some reduction in contractor services, but I believe most of this is staffing reduction.
Cool. Um, let's see if there's anything. I know that y'all made some cuts in technology.
Right.
Um, are we making any cuts to, um, well, I'll save that for another, another conversation. But okay, well, this is very helpful. I it's clear there's been so much work that's put into this. And I just want to like circle back to what trustee Quintana was kind of referring, raising earlier is like, how do we, um, it made me think about like how, when we do get the plan to get to a balanced budget um, in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, like, when does that, what is that document going to look like?
Yeah, I, well, that's a, I think that's something that Katrina and I are kind of working through right now. Um, because it, you need to have a balanced budget, you know, well before that time.
Right.
Uh, you know, to be honest, a balanced budget is the only way to get to the fund balance being like back to a healthy twenty percent. Uh, so it's going to be critically critically important that we get to a balanced budget sooner than the time that we get to, you know, we need multiple years of balanced budget before we can build up the fund balance back twenty percent. So that's a commitment from Katrina and I. Um, for me, you know what it looks like, it's a three-year document. It tells you precisely, you know, what areas kind of globally we're going to explore. I mean, consolidations is a big one. Um, there are others, there are other big ones that we'll have to consider. Um, and I think we're going to really have to understand kind of what the target amount is.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, this year was huge. We, we're talking about forty-four million dollars. I mean, this last year, we cut, I think, close to sixty. Um, and all of that was kind of given back.
Yeah.
Right, so it's controlling your costs, managing your budget differently. It's identifying reductions and then taking on the next thing. So um, I can work with Ms. Montgomery, and we can figure out what that document looks like and work with the board officers. Uh, I certainly have an idea of what that looks like. But to project out kind of whether it's going to be, you know, spring of twenty-seven versus, you know, spring of twenty-six, like where we'll be in that kind of trend line back to recovery. Um, I'd want to get the input from the team before we.
I appreciate that. Okay, because it says here, um, the policy language is going to say a board-approved restoration plan. So I just kind of wanted to be like, okay, so when are we going to get that? And I, maybe that can be just part of our budget calendar, which I think, are are we going to approve that in August? The budget development calendar?
I don't know. When does it go?
September.
September.
Okay, cool. All right, thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you. Nothing. Okay, good. Um, thank you for this. I have just a couple of questions. Um, one, if we can go to slide five, again, we love slide five. And I I know, um, if you look at slide five and then we look at slide seventeen with potential an amendment in September and potential quarterly updates. At my understanding, and I just want to be clear if I'm understanding correctly, is that is those quarterly updates are an opportunity to help us understand what our path is to recover, what the process is toward realizing these cuts to really make sure we are being transparent with our community about measurable, demonstrable, hard progress toward these goals.
Yes, President Boswell, at least once a quarter. That's what we're committed to.
Perfect, thank you. So I look forward to to tracking that. And thank you for building that in now and just making that our commitment um, as a a board and an administration. Thank you for that. Um, I want to look, uh, I want to talk about the fifteen percent fund balance again. And we're talking a whole lot today about all the things we have cut. Um, I really, um, this was a hard choice for a lot of us, I know. And and really with that commitment of not having to borrow to pay our staff, and I know we're right there at that margin, and and appreciate having a plan to get back. Um, and I know we're not the only district in the state that that has a policy like this, but it is a change for us and and really, um, we'll look forward to kind of understanding more about that path back. But I also want to talk about this choice as we look ahead to closures and consolidations and other things. What making this choice this year has allowed us to keep? Because we've been talking about cuts, um, you know, we started talking, we knew at the beginning of the year that um, revenue from the state is not keeping up with the expenses in our schools. And and that's not just us, that's a lot of people. So we um, very wisely, I think, started planning a very long time ago for this with the ad hoc committee, with very transparent conversations with our community, and with a meeting that really was very clear about the relationship between our budget and academic outcomes. Um, we really have have been talking about this for a long time. And and we have known there have been some really painful options as possibilities. And and I really want to just take a moment and kind of talk about the things we chose to keep and that that extra five percent has helped us do as we move toward a balanced budget and and why those things matter so much to what happens in our classrooms.
So um, one of the things that I that we that we know is that our budget um, is roughly eighty-six, eighty-seven percent staff, right? And so over the last eighteen months, you know, we've desperately tried to reduce costs that were furthest away from the classroom, right? And when most of your dollars are in the classroom by way of staff and support, and in our schools, it's hard to get those numbers down without going there. Um, and so we looked at contracts first. We looked at overtime. We looked at being strategic in how we reduced our central office administrative cost ratios and our, but to do it organically as there's retirements or as there's opportunities. What has happened at this, kind of in the spring of twenty-twenty-five now uh, is everything was was compressed because of some, you know, costs that that we incurred. Um, and when you think about what we protected, well, to get to twenty percent, you know, we would effectively have to do things um, that would bring harm to the schools. I would say the one that comes to mind is, um, you know, going through um, a a type of RIF, right? Reduction in force, because there's, that's where the, that's where our labor force is, that's where our budget is. The the numbers can't be achieved that quickly without doing something that aggressive. Um, and so that would require the board making the determination. It would require us having to um, look at contracts that have already been signed and going through a process. So what this allows us to do is to go through the central office kind of reorganization. It gives us time to think through consolidations, knowing that, you know, there's an opportunity that if we do it well, to become, to put resources in our schools where they need to be and 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 provide um, more better support. Uh, and if we get to that point, you know, where we have to make that decision, it will have been after every other single thing has been done before it. Um, and I think that's what that five percent gives us that we didn't have. If we had, if the requirement was twenty percent, uh, and and that was the direction, we, I would have gotten there, but it would have been um, near catastrophe. I mean, it would have been really, really difficult for us as an organization.
Thank you for that.
And I think it would harm a lot of the great work that we've done together over the last two years, I mean, honestly.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I know on the table at one point, you know, we had talked about teacher planning time would be one way to help us get there. Eliminating librarians would be one way to help us get there. And we know that that planning time has a very direct impact on the experience of our students in their learning in the classroom and on how we retain our teachers and make sure um, they're being able to do their work at the very best level they can. And that our librarians have a very direct impact on um, literacy in our district, which is obviously, you know, of of extremely high importance and carry a lot of other weight at the school, do a lot of other roles. So I really appreciate um, kind of noting what we're keeping and what we fought for by making some of these other hard cuts and what we're moving towards. So thank you for that. Um, I also just want to really thank certainly all the staff who worked on this and everyone I know. This has been, you know, campus up, um, a lot of people, and a lot of people have made, have tightened up and and helped us reduce the deficit. Um, really want to thank our ad hoc committee. I know the administration and the ad hoc committee did some very important work together um, that has laid the foundation for us getting to this point. Want to thank everyone who engaged with the budget along the way and really invite our community. There are going to be more opportunities for people to engage as we move forward with consolidations and with more budget conversations, and and this is. And, and this is a public budget, this is not the board's budget or the administration's budget. It's really our community's budget for our schools. And input from our community is really an important part. And, and as our decisions get harder and harder, being able to make hard decisions with that input is really important. So, thank you to everyone who's done that, and, and thank you for bringing this to us after a whole lot of work. Any other questions from anyone? All right. Oh, yes, Ms. Montgomery.
I would like to take one second, President Boswell. I have the fortunate opportunity to sit in the front of you, but this is not my work. The ladies in this front row are dynamic. They answer my calls. They are awesome. So, I want to say thank you to each one of them and the other staff. But for me, thank you to them for just putting up with me. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. I appreciate, and thank you all for being here. Really, I know it represents a whole lot that we don't ever see. So, really appreciate you joining us tonight. So, we will vote on this as part of our regular meeting. At this time, we're going to take, adjourn our public hearing on the budget, and take a short break, and then return to open our turnaround plan public hearing. Secretary Gonzalez, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Meeting is adjourned at 6:12 PM, and we will return shortly.